We're expecting Caroline.
So who's running the show here?
So off. There you go. Welcome to the joint board meeting of the current time building committee and the Fletcher Library Board of Trustees of February 3, 2025. It's start with with, sorry, this is a meeting being recorded. And anything that you enter into the chat becomes part of the public record as was one of any comments made during the meeting. With that in mind, could you call the role, please, Buffy?
Yep. Derek's here, Fleckner. Didn't I see?
Good.
Mary Ann.
She's there. She's just muted.
Okay. And Caroline is coming with you. Secor.
Here.
Teal.
Yeah.
Siegel.
Here.
Cook.
Yeah.
Isleton.
Here.
Rupinski.
Here.
Patton not here, is that right?
Robert. He's a new dad now.
Oh, yeah. Rob Roberts.
Here.
Ziegowitz.
Here.
Wimberg.
Here.
And the additional people, Leadberg.
Here.
Ingo.
Here.
And Kristen Lass is not coming tonight. McCrory.
Here.
Okay, we're ready to start.
Okay, first item was.
Buffy, I'm scared. I'm muted myself.
Oh, there you are. I knew you were here, Mary Ann.
So the precedent agenda is the minutes for December 18th, actually, three prime meetings, December 18th, 2024, July 15th, 2025, and January 22nd, 2025. Are there any additions or alterations to the minutes?
Scott, do you want those done individually? As a group? Because different people might have been absent.
Okay, on the on the scoreboard, we actually can vote if you weren't there, but sure, we can, okay, December 18th first then. Need a motion to accept.
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
Who is that?
Debbie.
Okay. Okay, here's the voting. Derek's, let's make sure I make sure who's here. Derek's eye, Lechner, you were not here.
I thought I was here on the 18th and not the 15th or 22nd, but if you have me not on the 18th, then I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you. I do have you off.
Okay.
Roach not here yet. Secor.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Let's see, so I don't call Mary Siegel, is that right? Because she wasn't even part of the.
Correct.
All right. Cook.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Rupinski.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Patton. Not here. Zegowitz.
Hi.
So one, two. Three, four. I believe I have it right. Eight, zero, one.
That sounds correct.
Should be nine.
Let's see. Let me do it again.
Five.
One second.
We would have been low on trustees, so.
And that wasn't official yet.
Oh, it is nine. Apologies, it is nine and then zero, one.
Okay, then so January 15th, it's motion to approve.
So moved.
All right, tell me who that was.
Chris.
That was someone else than me. I'll second whoever did it first, I'll second.
All right, who did it first? Was that you, Glenn?
Yes.
All right. So here we go again. And I have Mary Ann, you were absent that night, too.
Correct.
Okay. Derek's eye, Fleckner.
Abstain.
Roach. Not here yet. Oh, I might have counted her incorrectly before. I'll do my doubles later. Secor.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Rupinski.
Hi.
Roberts.
Here, I.
Patton is not here, Zegowitz.
Hi.
Right. One, two. Nine, zero, one.
Sorry, guys.
Are you counting me as abstaining?
Who is that?
Tom Wimberg.
I don't think I count you unless you are one of the official ones for the night, is that right?
You didn't.
I don't take his vote unless he's needed for a forum.
What was your appointment date, Tom?
Hmm?
What was your, what was your appointment date?
Oh, way back. I believe.
No, it was recently, he was made from an alternate to.
I think it was before the 15th, I think it was before the first.
Sorry, I did not realize he had been changed from being an alternate.
They get promoted, I think it's our first general meeting that we promoted him.
Yes. On the scoreboard, but I wasn't sworn in until last week.
Okay, so for all these meeting minutes, I won't count you, Tom, is that right?
That is correct, if that's how you're doing it. Yep.
I'm sorry, it really is eight, zero, one.
Okay.
Because Caroline isn't here yet.
Yeah, I think I was counting Tom on the.
Yeah.
Permanent town.
Okay.
Okay.
So with January, sorry, January 22nd. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
I was second.
Right? All right. I will. We're only three trustees here that night. So that would be Derek's eye. Lechner.
Abstain.
No. You were there that night.
Are you sure?
Yes.
This is the historical commission minutes.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, then I had them mixed up. Yes, I was, I apologize. I.
Okay, and then Roach and Secor were not there, Teal.
Hi.
So it'd be three, zero, zero.
Zero, one. I'll abstain.
At 22nd, I was there. Yes.
Right, but when there wasn't a quorum, Jean, I don't think I count you. Is that right?
No quorum for the.
Because the PDBC never met, we had a quorum.
Oh, gotcha.
So I'm not putting down one for you, Glenn.
No, cool, okay.
Actually, can can you even? Can Glenn even be on calling for the vote? If he wasn't there?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, as a procedural matter.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, even if you weren't there, you can make comments and make motions.
My interpretation also.
All right, got you, too.
But excellent point.
Okay, I guess it takes us to. Is there a architect on board tonight, or you do that, Ellen?
No, we actually don't have the architects tonight, so we can ask Jennifer to report on both the construction document finalization and the bidding process.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. So since the last meeting, there have been a few significant items. One is that the drawings were issued for bidding. That happened last week on the 29th, they were available to all bidders. The drawings were completed and this includes four deduct alternates that were recommended to the joint committee for inclusion in the construction documents. That would be an opportunity if the project required it. Due to budget, we are not required to do them if we are under budget or within budget. The drawings have been issued and everyone on the working group committee and the joint committee should have received a link to download those drawings. Those are considered the 100% construction drawings with the also a a specification of project manual. And everyone should know that we anticipate having a conform set of drawings that will happen if after we have questions and answers from all of the bidders. So the next steps in this process are that since we are out to bid, we have a prebid walkthrough this week. I'll stop here. Tom, you had a question?
Yes, is there any place where I can view the documents that is not a PDF? Is there a hard copy somewhere in the town?
I think currently there is not a hard copy in the town. We could get those printed. At the current time, we thought we would hold off on printing them with the anticipation that a conform set was coming just to save printing costs for the project. But if that's something that is needed, we could get a set printed and made available.
How long do you think it will be for the conforming set?
I think that it will be probably towards the end of February. Or actually, based on our, when our bids are due and everything, which is we're going to have the questions from all of the subcontractors by the end of, by February 21st, and then questions from the general contractors by the 13th of March, so it will take probably a good month.
Okay, it sounds like more like toward the end of March then.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I don't want to incur extra cost.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, there's a $4,400 cost further down our agenda, Repro Graphics.
Yes, I can help when that comes up to explain some of that. So just.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Did I hear you say there was a link? Distributed for that to view that?
Yes, yes. Do you, if there's anyone who has not received the link, please let me know. Actually, if anyone could just maybe raise their hands, I can make sure that I, James, I have your email address.
You do, I'm sorry, you do have it?
I do have that. It came from me, so it did not come from Alicia. So I will, I will get that reset to you. Is there anyone else who did not receive a link to that?
I found it, you don't need to send it.
I don't think I did because I'm new. So you probably don't have my email address.
Mary, I will, I will get your email address and get that sent to you.
Thank you.
Okay. So in terms of bidding, I wanted to let you know that we did have, the last time we spoke, there had been two trades that we put out for additional bid requests. One was electrical, we did receive additional electrical bids and, oh, sorry, prequalifications for bidders. And then we also put it out for elevators, which we did not receive any additional. We have a prebid walkthrough of the library happening this week. And then, as I mentioned, February 21st, we have questions due from subcontractors. And then a week after that, on February 27th, the subcontractor bids are due. And then on March 13th, we have questions due from the general contractors. Typically, there are more questions from the subcontractors than there are the general contractors, so we anticipate most of the questions to happen on February 21st or by February 21st. And then on March 20th, our bids are due. Is there any questions about that before I move onward? So that is the update on the bidding. As I mentioned, our drawings are done. And I think that is all the updates on bidding. I, and the progress of our project since our last meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Ellen, I guess we're on to you.
Yes, so Jennifer and I are collaborating on the moving RFR. I really appreciate a new template that she sent me. And we, we want to get a draft of that to Copelman and Page and to Mike Edwards as soon as possible. Because we, we will have some tricky timing to get that out, get bids and get a contract in front of the select board. Now that construction documents are at 100% and Andrea Bono Bunker, our, our building consultant from the Board of Library Commissioners has reviewed them, I will be submitting a request for our second disbursement of $1.570,399 million. And then as soon as the select board signs the contract with the construction contractor, we will be due our third grant disbursement. So both of those should come in this fiscal year. At this point, Town Treasurer, Treasurer Collector is looking at putting together a bond request for May 1st. But these two dispersments should go a long way toward covering our costs through, through April. I'll just update, we did get closed out conditions of approval. I received the final decision from Planning Board today for our files. And we had just a couple of outstanding items. So I've been corresponding with Town Council and also with the Board of Library Commissioners Consultant. So we actually are not going to need a town meeting article for an easement for overflow pipes to cross the northern library boundary onto land under the care and custody of the Select Board. Because the grant regulation language allows any kind of quote legal devise at the local level, we will be asking Town Council to create a license between the Select Board and the Board of Library Trustees that allows that piping to cross the boundary. I'm also waiting on a response from the the landscaping firm that worked with Fine Gold Alexander and Horstley Witten. We have the deed restriction from 1987, the pine screenings, all of those pines are shown on the lot and site plan that was put both before Planning Board and Conservation Commission. At the very end of the buffer where plantings actually are within the wetlands buffer, the pines become a more native vegetation. So we're just getting an opinion from Town Council that that meets the intent of the deed restriction from 1987. And our 10-day appeal now should be over, so we should be getting a final closeout document from the Conservation Commission as well.
Does that mean we do or do not have a meeting with the, with our butter?
We still need to have a meeting with our butter who was seeking screening in, in addition to that, Scott, and scheduling that's a little further down on page two of the agenda, so you know, if, if we can find that magical night when, or even late afternoon, when we can get together, we still absolutely owe the butter. And we need to meet potentially before we meet with the butter. So if there are no other questions, the library working group had recommendations coming out of their most recent meeting. And I can just summarize them here. So in the final plans, there are three public service desks that, you know, fall under the construction documents. And historic details were added to both the main circulation desk on the lower floor, level one, and on the reference service desk on level two. Some kind of unique pendant lights had been specified for the YA area so that the teens could have something a little jazzy. And a version of these was asked to be put over the main stairwell as well. And then there were a number of deduct alternates that the group looked at. And we understand they have to be prioritized in order, and these are the recommendations that, that group came up with. Eliminating a granite, that's not a building sin, a building sign in the rear landscaping for potential savings of $35,000. Removing costly built-in site benches and replacing of that furnishings on the rear patio with something more off the shelf. Reducing interior glazing by 25%. This, this is an exterior glazing that has to do with with you know, climate or with insulation, but that had a significant savings. And also removing the skylight and putting a ley light in the Marriott Wood Hall. So those are the recommendations from that committee for deduct alternates. And all total, there's about $135,000 dollars of potential savings, which we hope we won't need.
I think Glenn has a question.
I do. I have two questions. One is will we at some point be voting on these, these recommendations? And second is on the Marriott Wood. It's not really 50,000 that would be saved, right? Because it wasn't it the case it was going to cost 13,000 to do this? To do the alternate? So it's really only a $37,000 savings?
We can look at that, and we probably should ask the group to go ahead and take a vote on that tonight with that amount amended.
Yeah, because technically, the working group only exists to recommend to the mine joint board.
So are we, are we voting tonight on these?
We are.
Okay, do we know enough about, people feel like they know enough about, I miss that working group meeting, so other people are probably more up to speed than I am.
Well, and again, this is only if we have to make deductions. We might never have to do any of these, that would be really nice, but.
The working group's purpose is to advise the Town Building Committee and the Library Trustees.
Right.
Then make the decisions on anything involving construction, so it may be a fait accompli, but we still should vote to approve these.
And I think Mary Ann has a question, too, so maybe we should hear the questions before the vote.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. So I have two questions that just kind of roll into one. So Ellen, you had mentioned that you were talking with the treasurer and she may go out to bond in May. Do we know, like, when we were doing the estimate, what interest percentage we were using? Was it 5%, 6%, 7%? And then what anticipated interest rate are we using now, like, four and a quarter? And are we also still a AAA rated municipality?
So I did actually get a new debt exclusion schedule from the Finance Director just today. And it's not just the library project that the Town Treasurer would be going out and, you know, getting bonds for, but the, the library project amount in that spreadsheet is estimated at a 20-year bond at four and a quarter percent, Mary Ann. So yes, we continue to have a AAA bond rating. And that is the estimated interest rate. And at this point, it's 20 years. I'm, I'm sure that the reality is, as the date comes along and is closer, and the Town Treasurer works with Bond Council that, you know, whatever the best rate is at the time, or, and the best length of the bond, you know, is what she will take action on. So, but it still is very, you know, very competitive. And it, it comes on, amazingly, the median house price in Westford or value is now $779,000. So it comes to about $3.64 a week on a house with that value.
All right, thank you so much, yeah, and it's good that she's taking still a conservative approach with foreign aquata, so thank you very much.
Any other questions? So I think we need a motion to approve the Library Working Group recommendations.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, Buffy, do your magic.
I'll do that, but who was the second?
Rupinski.
Thank you. All right, here we go. Derek's eye, Fleckner.
Hi.
Roach.
Hi.
Secor.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Siegel.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Isleton.
Hi.
Rupinski.
Hi.
And Patton is not here, is that right?
Right.
Roberts.
Hi.
Zegowitz.
Hi.
Lindberg.
Hi.
Two, three. I believe I have 12, 00.
Okay, good. So next, we've got the approval of warrants, invoices, change orders, and proposals, of which there are none, so I guess this be invoices. Ellen, do you want to read those, or should I read those?
Yeah, I can read them and, and I could scroll down to the warrant cover sheet, but so we owe bid docs $4,500. CHA Solutions Opium Services through January 24th at $7,000. Fine Gold Alexander Architects 100% construction documents at $113,329.60. Fine Gold Alexander Architects Generation Generator Design 3,0960. Low voltage design 5,0280. Furnishings $2,000. Repro Graphics, this was copies of plans 4,45240, and that was approved earlier, but is showing up on the warrant tonight. A radon system at $1,000 and an additional radon system cost at $800. So the total of the warrant is $142,322. So moved.
Chris's question.
Yes, Chris.
Sorry. These items had been discussed before with a much larger price, and I'm happy to see the price is much smaller now, but is this the final cost that we have to pay on any of these topics, or is this going to come back as a boomerang and come back?
No, this, these are the final costs. You've, you've voted on portions of these before as the work was concluded. So what we're seeing now is the final invoice for generator design, the final invoice for low voltage design, there will be more furnishings. The final invoice for radon design and system, the final invoice for construction documents. So, and, and for bid docs. So this is the, these are the final invoices that represent add-in services that were approved earlier by the Joint Board.
I like that very much, thank you.
That minus. That mine is for motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Buffy, you're up.
Dirks, I, Fleckner.
Aye.
Roach.
Aye.
C4.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Seagull.
Aye.
Look.
Aye.
Isleton.
Aye.
Karpinski.
Aye.
And it's not here, Roberts.
Aye.
Degowitz.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Twelve zero zero.
And Ellen, if you, I mean, if you email Mike to sign the warrants. Yeah, if he's, you know, otherwise committed, I'll do it, but.
Okay, okay. He, he told me if I texted, he could send me an electronic signature. So we'll do it that way. Okay. And I'm, I just want Buffy you to know Diane Wood is also a guest on the participants.
All right, thank you. Hi Diane.
So maybe, so it's Chris, Scott, Glenn, myself. If there is a, a potential time this week that we could have a swift Zoom meeting and just recap. Then we could have, reach out to our neighbor next door. Thursday is not good for me. And I think for Scott, I believe financial Joint meetings are still happening.
Yeah, there is not one, there is not one on Thursday, I don't believe.
My only conflict is Thursday evening, but the rest of the week is available.
Maybe Wednesday? If I email you all, could we look even for late afternoon or early evening Wednesday?
Late afternoon, yes. Evening, as long as it's before Seven, I guess.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll double check with Glenn. You know, maybe we can do six fifteen on Wednesday or something like that, just To restart that.
I can on Wednesday.
You can?
Yes, can. No, I can.
Well, let's tentatively say six fifteen on Wednesday and I'll get a Zoom invite out.
Sounds good. Do we have the, the final letter from Town Council to the abutter?
We, we have the opinion, we only have the opinion of Town Council That the pines The pines constituted a restriction and should be on the site plan, which they were. So we, we don't have any additional guidance from Town Council beyond that.
Nancy?
I, I kind of have a question about the neighbors too. It seems like a long time trying to get together with the neighbor. Something we really should accomplish.
It's really us who haven't gotten together. Nancy, we've, we've really, it's been a mix of travel, illness, change in chairs. So it's Yes, we, we really Have seen this drag on and that is, I'm.
It seems like of all, of all the things to let go, it's an angry neighbor. And, and he is angry at this point.
Yes. Yes. We did get the pines trimmed on the lot line. Okay, we will try for this Wednesday evening.
I think there are, there are no additional service costs, right? We skipped five.
We're, we're fine to actually move on to new business.
Very good. So we need to schedule our March thirty first meeting. Or I guess do we need to have a meeting on March thirty first?
So the idea was that we would have everyone save that date with bids due on the twentieth of March. You know, hopefully everything will come in on bid, but we may need some time to review them. There are five Mondays in March, so we're able to work in this meeting and then You know, hopefully get contracts to the Select Board in early April. So I'll send out a save the date if everyone will Hold that on their calendars.
So I guess under B, does that mean we need to pick members of this committee to be on the construction?
So maybe that could be on the next agenda for a fuller discussion. We will, you know, we've Completed design and, and a lot of the bills, but The, the whole question, it would be nice, I hope Jeff and Kristen Also would be available, the, the whole manner of You know, who will go to construction, weekly construction meetings, who from CHA will be our onsite Representative. You know, we're definitely entering a completely different phase and, and need to Be clear about what has been the procedural past practice of the Permanent Town Building Committee and how to go forward.
Yeah, well, for the library, it was Paul Davies, who's no longer on the board, but.
By a department it was called, yeah.
Yeah, but for Rodenbush, it was Gene. So we got one veteran of this process who can tell you how much work it is.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't remember it being weekly. I thought it was bi-weekly. Is this one going to be weekly?
I think this will be weekly.
I believe it will be weekly. I was gonna say, I would like to stay involved. I'm not sure if I can handle weekly for two years. Wondering if we should have a sort of tag team.
But I think Ellen said we can discuss this at the next, at the next meeting anyway, or future meetings, so. We could point, we probably wouldn't have, I mean, I don't know what Ellen was thinking. I mean, we want, certainly the PTB, BC wants to have Somebody, trustees, they want somebody too.
And we were talking about tag teaming. We are talking about, so Understanding the commitment that it is.
Okay, so we'll hold that for the next meeting as well. And then, you know, the last routine item is to approve the December Amplifund Report. And, you know, once bids are received back, the Amplifund Report is going to be reflecting more You know, more cost and more More details and updates than, than it has up to this point.
So is there a motion to approve the Amplifund Report?
So moved.
Second. It's a question, not a statement.
Jean?
Yeah.
All right, here we go. Voting, Dirks, I, Fleckner.
Aye.
Roach.
Aye.
C4.
Aye.
Seagull.
I wasn't here in December, so should I have stayed?
Yep, thank you. Teal.
Aye.
Aye.
Isleton.
Aye.
Karpinski.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Degowitz.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Also abstained because I wasn't here.
Okay.
Eesh.
So, ten zero two.
Thank you. So we have before us all of our future dates and no more in, in February. This is a A rare month. We're going to have one meeting and, and done, I guess, with the way we, we'll be going forward after Several months of two or three or more a month. Any other notes to the meetings, Ellen?
No, so I will, I will send out a save the date reminder for March thirty first. And I'll update, I'm sorry, you're getting it as trustee postings, but that's just been the way we've done it. So we'll, we'll get them all out in front of you and hopefully We'll, as of the next meeting, you know, understand who has The assignments and the tasks associated with the construction, weekly construction project, so.
Anything else to come before the beating? Seeing no hands, I guess last promotion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Buffy, one last time.
All right, Dirks, I, Fleckner.
Aye.
Roach. Caroline. There you go. Thank you. C4.
Aye.
Seagull.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Aye.
Isleton.
Aye.
Karpinski.
Aye.
And not here, Roberts.
Aye.
Degowitz.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Twelve zero zero. At seven twelve.
Great. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.